Well, we're here with Laney Sherman, a candidate for council and halfway through a very grueling process of getting there. I wish you good luck, but I want to thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much for having me Larry and Hillary, it's a pleasure to be here.
We're glad to have you and we think you're over halfway. You're getting there, you're almost in the home stretch. You're in the home stretch. So I'm going to start off with our first question this evening. What do you think the city's roles and responsibilities should be around our economic community in Santa Cruz?
I don't think it's the city's job to promote any one business, but I think it's our job to attract businesses here that benefit our community. I think it's our job, of course, to govern fairly, to tax lightly, to distribute benefits equitably amongst our community. Am I answering your question?
Yeah. When you talk about that, are there areas of interest for you or focus that you'd want? For example, if you're on council, you're going to interact with the Economic Development Department. Do you think that there's areas that they should be concentrating on? Or as a council, you think that we should spend more time on or?
I'm really interested in promoting ecotourism in Santa Cruz. I used to live in southeast Alaska, which before the advent of ecotourism was an incredibly resource-heavy economy. And there was a lot of extraction, it was mostly fishing and logging. And now that it's based mostly on ecotourism, it's in the interest of everybody to preserve the environment there and make sure that it stays beautiful for future generations. I really appreciate that kind of tourism and the attitude that it develops and encourages in the community there. And I'd like to see more of that here in Santa Cruz. We have a small local example of that with the Emma McQuarrie Trail, which I initially wasn't in favor of because I wasn't sure if the mountain bikers would cut new trails like they often do up upper campus. But it's been a great boon to our economy, it's been great for the Pogonip. I'd like to see more attraction of mountain bikers in that way. And I'd like to see more tourism that relies on the natural beauty here so that it's not just a question of attracting sheer numbers of people here, but what they do once they're here and how that affects our community. So that's an area that I'm personally very interested in.
We've just had the La Bahia project approved unanimously by council. And I'm sure that the memberships watching this would be interested to know how you feel about that project.
Well, the first thing I feel about La Bahia is it needs a coat of paint. Why has this not happened? It's looking kind of shabby. So I would really like to have a volunteer paint day. I bet we could come up with the paint and a platoon of volunteers that would be happy to stiff that place up. I think we could probably do it in a day or two. No matter what's going to happen in a year or two, that would make a big difference. I think right there on that main thoroughfare that people see it all the time. So that's my first thought about La Bahia is let's do something right now to make that just look a little bit nicer without a massive investment. Of course, it's been approved, I don't have any say on where that goes. That's something that the current council has done. And I'm interested to see where that goes. I have a concern that it will be demolished before they're ready to build and I really don't want to see that happen because I understand that the current structure is an eyesore, but it would be even a bigger eyesore if we're not there for a year or two. So I want to make sure that it moves quickly whatever happens so that we can see those benefits for the community.
Do you think it's appropriate for the city to invest in significant projects like La Bahia?
I'm concerned about the tax rebate, the transient occupancy tax rebate that was gifted to those three large hotels, La Bahia, The Hyatt and The Marriott, I think were the three. Is that, am I correct in that?
Yes. It actually wasn't gone to anybody.
Okay, but it's over the course of 10 years, right?
They are potential applicants, so that was part of the discussion with the staff before. And I think maybe part of the misunderstanding with the conversation around that. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you for clarifying. No, I really appreciate that, thank you for clarifying. So can you expla-- no, I can't ask you a question, can you explain to me a little bit more?
I can, but I think really it's, I think--
Okay, I'll just answer the question. So I think the main benefit, the main community benefit that large hotels bring in is generating tax revenue. So I have a concern about returning some of that tax revenue. I'd like to see that tax revenue be distributed equitably in the community. So for example, the one on Broadway and Ocean was actually rezoned. It was 400 feet out of the proper, you know, 400 feet beyond the border, I think. And the reason that it was rezoned is because it had this community benefit that it would bring in tax revenue. But then there's this proposal to return some of that tax revenue and I have a concern about that. I do think that it's important that we provide some assistance. For example, if there's going to be a permanent arena downtown, we're going to need to grapple with parking. But as far as providing a leg up for big businesses in town, I'm not sure we need to do that. I think this is a very desirable location and it might cut into the bottom line a little bit. But I think that those three hotel developers in particular would be happy to develop here in town whether or not they have a rebate on their TOT, so yeah.
Are there areas of infrastructure that you think the city should invest in around economic development? Or do you have the same sense of this should be the developer's responsibility? The city shouldn't invest in infrastructure?
Well, I think, for example, I was mentioning ecotourism, that I'd like to see more of that. And we have an incredibly friendly city for bicycles. And I'd like to see us invest more in the rail trail project or the coastal rail trail, you know, whatever that ends up being. I'm from New England originally and we have these carriage roads in Maine, for example, that are at tourist itch, people come just to ride their bikes on these carriage trails.
I don't know.
And they're lovely. I would like to see more of that in Santa Cruz. So I could see investment in infrastructure in that way that I think would lead to economic development. And perhaps a difference is that that investment in infrastructure is something that's distributed equitably. It's not only for tourists, it's not only for the purposes of economic development, but it's something that everybody that lives here can enjoy and benefit from as well. So I would like to see investment in those kinds of infrastructure. And I think there's other infrastructure that the city, of course, needs to invest in for safety purposes and that kind of thing. So another investment in infrastructure that I could see that I think will benefit the whole community, I'm really concerned about the River Levy, I live right on the River Levy. So I'm on it a minimum of two times a day. And I'd really like to see that developed as a pro-social area. I'd like to see some interpretive signs, I'd like to see more public art along there. I'm interested in some small modular cafes or kiosks along the levy and how we can make that feel more family-friendly. So I think I'm interested in that kind of infrastructure because I think that sort of attracts a new kind of business as well. As we're considering our investment, of course, we need to be attracting green jobs. We have, for example, a tremendous amount of industrial space on the west side that's empty right now. And I'd like to see some kind of development around that, perhaps some incubators, I think that's what they call them, for UCSE students to start businesses based on things they've learned up there. So I'm interested in that kind of development as well.
When you talk about the River Levy and potential for kiosks or some sort of business down there, would you be willing to see some housing development or businesses that are more focused on and around the river? Or is it more things to just get people on the levy path, on the River Walk?
Well, we already have the River Walk apartments going up, so there is already housing that's going up right there on the River Levy that's happening. I have a little bit of a concern about concentrating low-income housing in the floodplain, essentially. So I want to see low-income housing more distributed throughout our community. And I guess what I was talking about with the investment in infrastructure was specifically around embracing the river and not necessarily around housing, but more around cafes or restaurants or things that--
So that's what I'm talking about, development in general, not specific to affordable housing, but whether it's housing or some type of business development along the river, there's always been a discussion around river-facing businesses versus putting our backs to the river.
No, I'd really like to see us face the river and embrace the river instead of turning our backs on the river. I think that's really important, I think that will improve the quality of all of our lives here.
Would it be about the river that would be so attractive that people would invest in those kinds of things? So people would want to go and see it?
You'd have to ask my mom, she's like 72, and when she comes and visits, she loves walking on the River Levy. I think it's just, it's really nice to have a pedestrian path. And there's, I mean, when my mother and I walk there, we see blue herons, we see snowy eaglets, we run into friends. I'd like to see, I'm an athlete, so I would like to see a workout station along the River Levy, just, you know, little stations tucked around the river, I think that'd be great. We have that one station right by the Plaza where Ross dressed for lesses, there's a little fitness center. But you know those courses that you see, they're all over the place? They're pretty inexpensive to install, I would love that. So I'd really like to see that. But I think, you know, in general, humans have a fascination with moving water. There's a reason that we built right on the river and right by the coast. And I think the river's sort of a forgotten area, it's almost like a back alley. But it is really beautiful, kind of stunningly so. I mean, there's a lot of wildlife there, there are coyotes that live there. I think people are just attracted to these open spaces, you can walk without traffic and listen to birds. At least that's what my mother says, she comes out here and she's like, "Let's go walk into town." It's so exciting to her, you know, we can walk and do our errands. So I guess it's worth mentioning, she's not an athlete, she's not in very good shape. And so that's a pathway that I think could have a really broad appeal for a lot of different people with some really minor investment. I think we have a lot of artists in this community that would be really happy to contribute artwork. I know Kathleen Crochetti would just love to do another project with her kids. It's like free labor and beautiful art. So I just think, you know, moving water is attractive, the birds are lovely. Walking without danger, being smushed by a car is sort of pleasant.
Let me change directions here slightly. In our business community, one of the most significant problems is housing for our workforce. And it's a barrier to progress and profitability, to success in a lot of ways. So it's a big issue for us and of course, it's the community. Be interested in your characterization of that problem. What does that mean to you, affordable housing and the problems that the city faces?
Well, you asked me to characterize the problem and I suppose I would sum it up by saying that the earning power of our workers in this town doesn't match the cost of living here. And the problems that that brings on have a lot to do with traffic and the fabric of our community. So what we end, I mean, we have a lot of service sector jobs here, we're a tourist town. But many people that work service sector jobs can't afford to live here, primarily because housing is so expensive. So we end up with this situation where people are commuting from far away for the service sector jobs. And then the people that live here have to commute far away so that they can make a living and afford to live here. What we end up with are terrible traffic problems and a disintegration of our communities. When you have a neighborhood that doesn't consist of people that walk together, play together, visit with each other, had that cohesiveness, you're more prone to crime problems, quite frankly. I live in a very, very tight community and it's affordable housing. And I had a friend come visit me recently and I wasn't home, but my bike was there, which usually means I'm home. So they knocked on the door, no one was there, went around and peeked in the curtains to see if I was home. My neighbor was there in like a minute and a half, "Can I help you? What are you doing here? Who are you looking for?" That makes your community strong, that makes your neighborhood safe, that kind of care for each other. So when you have this fragmented community where people can't afford to live and work in the same place, it doesn't just lead to traffic problems, I think it leads to a disintegration of community.
And what role would you, as a councilperson, play in addressing those problems?
Well, I think one place we can start is easing the restrictions on accessory dwelling units and making a really good faith effort to cooperate with people that want to build dwelling units in their backyards. We could grandfather-in more places. Of course, we need to attend to basic health and safety when we're talking about accessory dwelling units. But I'm sure you're aware of the case of Paula who was just booted out. You all know about this one, Paula, that can't stay in her unit anymore. Even though it's safe, it's up to code, but the lot that it's on isn't big enough to have an accessory dwelling unit. I would like to be part of grandfathering that in. I understand there used to be subsidized loans for people that were going to build ADUs that they would then rent out to low-income people. I'd like to see that program invested in, even if it's just a myth that it used to exist. Maybe we could bring something like that into play. So I think part of how we can grapple with affordable housing is with accessory dwelling units. And again, I think we're doing a good job right now, but I think we need to have more of an attitude of cooperation. Housing is so expensive here that we shouldn't be removing housing from the market unless it really can't be brought up to health and safety codes. To shut down an accessory dwelling unit because it's a foot off the mark or it's 10 feet square too small or those kinds of things, I don't think that's a good faith effort to bring that housing into our stock. I think San Francisco just passed something with accessory dwelling units where they call them non-compliant but safe or there's some kind of language around those. I'd like to see much more work done with that, with the planning commission. And I think they're moving in the right direction with that, but I'd like to be more involved in that process.
Just on this topic, because I think one of the challenges is that, or one of the things that I think happening, I don't know if it's a challenge, but it's just the reality of the conversation when you're talking about accessory dwelling units, it gets tied in with the rental inspection ordinance. How do you feel about the rental inspection ordinance? Do you feel like that's something that you would want to continue to work with? Or there's definitely been a lot of conversation around the campaign of repealing that ordinance and not having that?
Well, first of all, I would want to listen to a lot more community members around the rental inspection ordinance. I've been to a couple of forums and heard some really angry people that are strongly opinionated, but I-- I want to listen to more people that hopefully have more varied opinions about the rental inspection ordinance. I feel like one of the most important things you do as a city council member is sort of take the measure or the temperature of the room. And that doesn't just mean listening to the loudest, angriest people in the room, I don't think. So I need to listen to more people before I make a decision about the rental inspection ordinance. I've heard some people talk about a moratorium while they reconsider it, I would be in favor of that. It seems to me, from talking to, again, not as many people as I hope to, that there's some pretty serious problems with the way the rental inspection ordinance is being enforced. And namely, that it's taking housing off the market right now. And I think we need to work with keeping housing on the market wherever possible. So I would say the rental inspection ordinance, from my limited understanding, needs some adjustment. And I don't know exactly what that adjustment is. It could be a repeal, it could be some minor adjustments in language that encourage grandfathering places in instead of taking them off the market. But it seems pretty clear that there are a lot of people that are not very happy with the rental inspection ordinance. If I were called upon tomorrow to start making decisions about it, my first step would be to canvass a wider group of people and maybe convene a meeting of not the usual suspects so I could hear some maybe neutral opinions, if those are out there. Hillary's like, "Good luck with that, let me know how that works for you."
Another approach that's currently addressing the general plan around this issue of affordable housing is the densification of housing in downtown urban areas and corridors and so on. And if we can envision a large six or seven-story building of apartments, is that something that you find that you could support?
I think I might use the word inevitable to describe that. Population is increasing, Santa Cruz is an incredibly desirable location. We all love our green belt. You put those numbers into an equation and what you spit out is increased densification. So my vision of the future of Santa Cruz is more like a glittering emerald city surrounded by lovely natural areas, an enviable urban-wild interface. The other option is sprawl, and I don't think that's acceptable. So as our population increases, one of the things I think we're going to come up against is smaller dwellings. We're going to have to adjust our ideas of what's a comfortable space to live in because that will provide us with more open space, which is also a really important part. And I think people in Santa Cruz are remarkably amenable to that. I just read this really disturbing statistic that 39% of Democrats would rather have a larger house than a livable, or a walkable, community. And for Republicans, it's like 62% or something would rather have a large house than be able to walk to the things that they need in their lives. I don't think that's true in Santa Cruz. I think most of us would rather have walkable communities here. And densification is going to be part of that multi-use, you know, bottom floor or two having some kind of commercial and then upper floors being residential. I think that's definitely coming down the pipe, particularly along our high-traffic corridors. But we're in an enviable position where we can make these decisions about how we're going to grow. Again, I'm from New England and I don't think it was thought out very carefully back there. My little brother has to commute the equivalent of from Watsonville to Santa Cruz and it takes him an hour and a half every day. And he's got a huge house with a huge yard and he spends three hours every day in his car, you know? So I think we can do better than that. I think we can learn from some things that have happened to other places and plan carefully for walkable communities and increased closeness with our neighbors and--
I think we need to switch gears and the last question we have for you is, our two largest industries are higher education and tourism. Where do you think the focus should be in those two areas? What do you think the values or the challenges are with those two industries in Santa Cruz?
Well, both of those industries are, what's the proper word? They're invaluable to our economy, they're really what keeps us humming. So we need to improve our relationship with the university. I think it's been contentious in the past. And one of the things I've noticed from, I've been walking neighborhoods endlessly, and when I walk places that have a lot of student houses in them, mostly what I hear from the neighbors who aren't students is, "These people don't care about this place. They just come, they're here for two years, they're gone." So I'd like to see more student investment in our community. I think that would be a way to change some of this contention that's taken place between the university and the city. One of the recommendations of the Public Safety Task Force was more pro-social after-school programs. And quite frankly, kids in high school and middle school do not want to hang out with you and me. They want to hang out with university students who know how to use the latest app on iPhone and everything. That seems like a home run. There's tons of students that need internships. We've got tons of students that need something to do after school. It seems like we could just hire an administrator and funnel students down here. That would be good for our kids, it would be good for them. But the hidden bonus in that is if the university students would be involved in this community, they'd come down off of their city on a hill and start to be more in the city. I think that's going to help and improve those relationships, so yeah.
And with the thought in mind that the university really is its charter to educate as many students as possible and that results in the university growing, how do you feel about the growth on the north campus and the university expanding beyond what their current capacity is?
Those are two big, different questions. How do I feel about the university expanding? Again, inevitable. How do I feel about them developing the north campus? I don't think that's an appropriate site for development. If you look at a map of Santa Cruz, that north campus, which most people call upper campus, is part of our green belt. It connects the Pogonip, Henry Cowell, Graywell Ranch and Wilder Ranch State Park. So it's a tiny little slice of pie in the green belt that's privately owned. And I think in Santa Cruz, we've shown that we value our open spaces tremendously. The other thing we've learned is that once you develop an open space, you can't get it back. So I don't think that's an appropriate site for development personally. I think it's a tremendous asset to the university. If you look at any of their promotional videos, most of them feature upper campus. As this beautiful, I mean, and if you walk around an upper campus, you can hardly go 10 feet without tripping over some biology students' field project with, you know, all their little boxes or who knows what they're doing, their flags and stuff. So I don't think that's a great site for development personally. I'm a recreational user, I regularly use that for hiking and biking and all kinds of stuff. However, that's not my decision to make, clearly that's the university's decision to make. There's a couple of precedents though. UCSD, for example, has decided they're not going to expand their campus, they're going to grow up. They're going to do what we're doing in Santa Cruz, they're going to have increased densification on their current campus. I think that would be a great decision for UCSE to make. For example, I would like the residents of the city to decide about extending water service to the north campus to fuel that expansion. And if the residents of the city want to expand, I would stand by that. But the Measure J that was overturned, there's two Measure Js, of course, in the history of Santa Cruz, but the one that was overturned about water, does anyone remember what that passed by? 80%, right? That's pretty big, not many things pass by 80%. And that Measure J just said, "If we're ever going to extend water beyond the current boundaries of the city, the citizens get to decide." So 80% of citizens would like to decide. And if they choose that we should extend our water service, I'll go with that. But I think that should be up to the citizens to decide. As far as the university expanding, I think they could grow up. You know, they could build taller buildings, which would be essentially the vision that I'm embracing for Santa Cruz. And I think there's potential for development on the west side where we have a lot of industrial land and they own a couple of buildings as well. Any further expansion of the university, particularly if it takes place on the west side, is going to have to have an aggressive component of shuttle buses because of course, one of the main considerations there will be how that affects traffic. But I think, I mean, Stanford did a really remarkable job with their comprehensive settlement agreement. Stanford's pledge to the city of Palo Alto was that their expansion would have zero impact on traffic in the city. And that required an investment on their part in public transportation for their students. Right now, a lot of UCSE students rely on our metro system to get to and from campus. I think that the university could invest in more shuttles to get students to and from campus, particularly if they decide to expand off-campus at a satellite location. And so to sum up, expansion is inevitable. People seem to keep breeding, that's happening, right? Like our population is growing. But the north campus is a really precious resource in terms of the natural beauty, the recreation, and also the scientific opportunity for students. So I would like to see that area protected. I kind of think it could be a win-win for the university, but this is probably a mark of how naive I am. If, you know, George Blumenthal came forward and said, "I'm going to protect that in perpetuity because it's not just a value to students, but it's a tremendous asset for the city of Santa Cruz." That would help relations between the city and the university as well. So, not to say they can't expand, but Hillary's like, "Yeah, talk to me in two years."
How do you feel about the Water Task Force recommendations? You don't know what they are yet, yet.
No, we don't know what they are.
What I'm curious is, is there any possible solution that is being discussed there to improve water supply? Any of those alternatives that might come forward? Things that you might simply reject out of hand?
Have you guys been to any of their water supply advisory? They're boring, oh my gosh, they're amazing, right?
Wait till you sit there for some council meeting.
No, I was just, you're asking, have they discussed anything there in terms of supply? And mostly what I've heard them discuss is like, "Who's going to facilitate the next meeting? And where are we going to get this person from and how much are we going to pay this consultant?" And, I mean, it's just remarkable, like four hours of that and you're like, "What, water?" So just, I have not, I've sat through some of those meetings, I think two of them, and I haven't heard any suggestions leaping out at any of those meetings. I've heard a lot of process. They're having a forum on October 16th, I'm really excited to observe that and attend that and see what's come forward. I've been talking to people a lot about water and I think there are some solutions for water, but it's really up to the Water Supply Advisory Committee to see what they come up with. And I'm really eager to hear their suggestions. They gotta arrive at consensus though, so--
Well, they want to.
That'd be great.
It's an operating principle of that group.
Right.
It may not be possible in the final analysis.
We'll see.
But the, if you had two alternatives that come forward that are controversial and have been in our community for some time, for de-solonization and the addition of additional water storage in the form of something resembling, for instance, a lock-on. Are either of those two possibilities offensive to you?
Well, actually, more what I'm hearing about is tertiary treatment. As I go and knock on people's door and I talk to some people at the water department in Scotts Valley, they have a tertiary treatment plant up there, of course, you all are familiar with this, I'm sure. It produces a million and a half gallons of water a day. And they're under-subscribed for it, but they have tremendous infrastructure, a purple pipe going in, and they use half a million gallons and the rest they can use to recharge their aquifer. The man that I spoke to up in Scotts Valley said he would drink the water, the tertiary-treated water. In Orange County, they're drinking tertiary-treated water, in Israel they drink it, in western Texas they're drinking it. So I'm hearing a lot about that when I go door-to-door and ask people, "What do you think, how can we get out of this water thing?" I'm hearing a lot more people speak about tertiary. And I think, again, that might be inevitable. It seems like that's a booming technology that more and more communities, particularly in the area and west, are investing in because it's less energy-intensive and it's a lot cheaper than either of those options that you mentioned. We already have two treatments--
Even with the infrastructure necessary to deliver it?
Yeah, even with the infrastructure. That's, I mean, again, I spoke to somebody that works over at Neri Lagoon, he's worked there for 20 years and he just would not stop talking about tertiary treatment, I was amazed. I was amazed. I thought he was a janitor or something, but he's like, giving me numbers and stats and prices and all this stuff. I just knocked on his door to invite him to a house party or something. So I think there's, I think there's a lot more that we could do to investigate the idea of tertiary treatment. That's, that's more interesting to me personally, partly because Scotts Valley is already doing it. I think San Jose is investing like thirty-three million dollars in a tertiary treatment plant. And partly because we flush eight million gallons of water a day into the ocean. And if we could at least use that water to recharge our aquifer, hopefully use that water for industrial and agricultural purposes or to flush our toilets, for example, instead of using potable water to flush our toilets. I think that might relieve a lot of the pressure that we're seeing right now from the drought. You mentioned infrastructure, and there is certainly some infrastructure required. The thing about purple pipe or gray water is that it's much cheaper to install it when you're building than to retrofit a place to accommodate purple pipe. So if we're going to be talking about tertiary, I'd like to see us requiring purple pipe in new buildings that go in because that will offset the cost that is required for that infrastructure. We'll have some infrastructure built into new developments, particularly their large developments.
I have time for one more question. I want to go back to something that you mentioned in Larry's conversation about housing density along the corridors and that that's inevitable. And one of the things that I've found is that when we have those discussions, people are very much in favor of them until you realize that all those transit corridors have very established neighborhoods for most people behind them and that those neighbors are very much impacted by that height. How would you, as a councilman, balance those neighborhood concerns and needs that are very real with that housing need and going up and the impacts that would have on the neighborhood?
Well, I think first and foremost, I know this sounds ridiculous, but it's been my experience. People often just need a place to vent. So I think providing that forum and listening to people throw money at you for a while is part of the process. They will calm down a little bit after that. And then talking about maybe bringing in neighbors from places that have gone in and how they've interacted with the neighborhoods and the people that were already there. Where I live, the River Walk apartments are going up right in my backyard. And it's a pretty interesting phenomenon. I have two neighbors that are like twelve feet from the River Walk apartments. One of them says, "It doesn't really bother me." And it's like, they're building it all day from seven in the morning till five at night. And she's just like, "Yeah, it's nothing to do." The other neighbor's like, "Oh my God, I have to move. I can't stand it." It's driving her insane. So that's probably a pretty fair representation of the spectrum that you get in response to these. But if we can work to build that community aspect in, to build those relations between the neighbors, I think that will improve it. So if it's less a question of this being forced on somebody, people don't tend to respond very well to that. If there's some way to sort of lubricate that process and facilitate that process, I think that will go a long way, as cheesy as it sounds.
I think we are out of time. Thank you so much.
It's been a delight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Very appreciate it.
Pleasure.